Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ready? Let's get, uh, we'll get Richard to sit down.
I'm here, so I don't have to sit down.
Okay.
I'll stand.
All right. Ready?
Yep.
I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for Tuesday, April 24th, 2012, at, uh, a little late, at, uh, 6:39 PM. Uh, we'll stand for the invocation from Pastor Chris Anderson in the house of prayer, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Maryville, and as we adjourn this meeting and continue on, Father, we thank you for wisdom and the decision-making on behalf of these people, and we thank you for the privilege, in Jesus' name, amen.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the United States of America, and to the good Father whom your Prayer stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Okay, Mr. Gernsy, roll call, please.
It's all good now.
Span.
Here.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Miano.
Here.
Geralcheck.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Whiting. Pettit.
Here. Six members, we have quorum. Next item on the agenda is petitions, communications, and remonstrations, proclamation for Arbor Day. Mr. Fink?
Would you like me to read it, sir?
Certainly.
Whereas in nineteen, excuse me, let me start over, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside, excuse me, set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood, and for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore be reclaimed by the Town Council, the Town of Maryville, at Friday, May the 11th, 2012, be designated as Arbor Day in the Town of Maryville, Indiana, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to dedicate this day to the importance of health, safety, and environmental issues affecting our community and the children who reside with all of us.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Geralcheck, to approve the proclamation for Arbor Day. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Fibromyalgia Awareness Day. Mr. Fink?
Fibromyalgia Awareness Day. Whereas an estimated 10 million people in the United States and millions of people worldwide have been diagnosed with Fibromyalgia, a disease for which there is no known cause or cure, and whereas it often takes an average of five years to receive a diagnosis of Fibromyalgia, and medical professionals frequently are inadequately educated on the diagnosis and treatment of Fibromyalgia, and Fibromyalgia is a life-altering, preventing, is life-altering, preventing patients from contribution to society at the level they once did because of meridative symptoms that can, that can come and go unpredictably and vary in severity, and whereas Fibromyites, Fibromyites unite, the National Fibromyalgia Association, the Fibromyalgia Network, and other groups around our country have joined together to promote Fibromyalgia awareness and support, including improved education, diagnosis, research, and treatment. Now therefore, we, the Town of Maryville, and the Maryville Town Council, do hereby proclaim May the 12th, 2012, as Fibromyalgia Awareness Day in the Town of Maryville, and urge all citizens to support the search for a cure and assist those individuals and families who deal with this devastating disorder on a daily basis.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Miano, second by Mr. Span, to approve the proclamation for Fibromyalgia Awareness Day. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, uh, under communications, is a letter to us from Tri-Electronics, Maryville Town Council, 7820 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. Dear Council, Tri-Electronics Incorporated will be installing a satellite receiver at the Randolph Verizon Tower location. The purpose of this receiver is for better radio coverage for the Maryville Police Department. The police department has been working with Verizon and Tri-Electronics for the past few months. Verizon has requested that Tri-Electronics apply for a permit for the work that will be performed. We are asking that all permit fees be waived, since this work will be done for the town. Sincerely, Mike Flannery.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mr. Geralcheck, uh, through the chair. Gentlemen, I would ask that, um, the permit fees be waived, but not the inspection fees, since we pay our electrical inspectors by the inspection. Your motion, and second, stand with that caveat, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Accounts Payable Register Voucher Approval, April 24th, 2012. Approval of the Town Council Minutes of April 10th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mrs. Miano, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any questions? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. Geralcheck.
Yes, I'd like to schedule a meeting, uh, two weeks before the council meeting. I'm not sure what the date is on that. Do you have a calendar in front of you?
Uh, we are having a special, uh, council meeting on the 9th, Tom, because of Election Day, only to approve the consent agenda. I believe at 12:30, we scheduled that for, Howard, so that Gene can, can do the accounts payable, uh, and then our regular scheduled meeting will be May 22nd, which is Municipal Government Week, where the, uh, schoolchildren are coming in and substituting for us, so...
Maybe we can do it, um, like an BZA night or something like that.
Your preference, or Plan Commission night?
I'll put the notice out, and I'll look what, uh, would be good, or whatever, I don't know what's on the agendas for those. That's all of my report.
Okay. Uh, Public Works, Mrs. Miano?
Yes, I have a, a letter from Walsh &amp; Kelly requesting an extension of existing roads rehabilitation contract from 2011 to 2012. Um, they did send us a detailed copy for the coding, for the convenience, and the reference for the town. They have in here, um, an estimate for milling asphalt to two inches, hot mix asphalt, 9.5 millimeter asphalt for tack coat, and also curb and gutter removal and replacement. I would like to hear a motion that we continue with the extension of Walsh &amp; Kelly.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, second by Mr. Span, to extend the existing contract with Walsh &amp; Kelly. Is there any discussion? For the record, Bruce, this will, this is honoring the prices we have been paying over the past several years and not hitting us up for an increase in fuel cost, correct?
This is actually the price that we paid last year, uh, when fuel was actually cheaper. I don't know what's going on as of today, because every gas station I went by, they were packed with cars, so I don't know if fuel prices are going back up, but it locks us into the old prices. They still have material left from, from last year, their liquid asphalt, and those kind of things that they still have stored, that, uh, allows us to use last year's prices.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Miano, anything else?
No, nothing.
All right, Council Affairs, Mr. Span?
No report.
No report. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Geralcheck?
Uh, I guess the direct deposit, uh, has taken place, and, uh, everybody should be on the direct deposit system, right, Gene?
Yep.
That's all I had to report.
We actually went pretty smooth.
We had our wellness this morning, too, Mr. Geralcheck.
Well, sorry about that.
It's okay. I probably shouldn't have come in this morning. All right, anything else, Tom?
No.
Public Safety, is there anything for Mr. Whiting? Chief, you have anything?
Oh, we've been getting a few of the new cars in, so, they're at the shop getting equipped.
All right, uh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Span?
Yes, I, I need a motion for, uh, $75,000 for CCD money for the parks.
Are you making that as a motion?
Yeah, okay, I'm making that as a motion, yes, sir.
CCD money for the $75,000 for park equipment?
Park equipment, yes.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mr. Geralcheck, to authorize or appropriate $75,000 out of the Cume Cap Development Fund, which is outside the general fund, um, specifically for park equipment replacement, uh, there's, uh, if you don't mind, Don, there's a lot of parks that we've been inventorying, and a lot of them need, uh, replacement equipment. Um, I would ask, gentlemen, that you add the caveat on that this be an annual, uh, appropriation for this council until, uh, we've got the parks in Maryville up to, um, the standards we want to see them at, based on the, the report we had done. Uh, they were identified, there's a lot of equipment that needs to be replaced.
Also, I need a, um, fee waiver for, uh, HEVAC unit, heat, ventilation, and air conditioning need to get through this.
All right, yeah, let's get through the, the first appropriation, Mr. Span.
All right.
Uh, any discussion on the $75,000 appropriation?
Uh, I have, uh, a little bit on it, and I, I think that we should take it year by year. I mean, as far as, I don't know where the budget's gonna stand. I think that the, we should do it, uh, on a yearly basis to make sure that it's budgetable for us.
Okay.
So, I mean, let's do it the first year and see where we stand, and then next year, if we're, we have money in the, uh, then I would suggest that we do it that way.
Okay.
So, my motion stands as, uh, as it was.
Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, you'd have to do it that way, anyway. The, the action you take tonight would only be for the appropriation for this year.
For this year, okay, for 2012. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Now, Mr. Span.
Okay, I need another motion. I, I, well, I'd like to make a motion for the fee waived, the HEVAC, the, uh, heat unit, the ventilation unit, and air conditioning unit that, uh, we were replacing in the Parks Prudence Center.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mr. Geralcheck, to waive the fee for the HVAC unit that's gonna be installed in the Prudence Center?
Yes, sir.
Who's doing that work, Don?
Bloomfield Mechanical, the same people that just did the ventilation system here.
All right, again, I would ask, through the chair, to the, to the members, that, um, this waiver of fee not include the inspection. Uh, we still do HVAC inspections, correct, Dorinda? Those fees still need to be paid.
Yes.
So that that can be properly inspected.
Why are we waiving the fees?
The fees for the, uh, for the permit.
Permit fee for the HVAC.
It's for our HVAC.
I understand that, but why are we waiving the fees? This is a private company that's doing this.
He came in with the price of, uh, 16.5, and then I went back to him, and...
It would be, it would be no different, Rich, than we waived it for Tri-Electronics, who's installing the repeater out on Randolph Street. I mean, they're doing work for the town.
Okay.
They're contractors, but, I mean, it's our prop, I mean, I don't know, guys, anybody else?
Okay.
We've done it for one, we might as, you know, so long as they pay the inspection fees, the inspectors do the work. I want to make sure those guys get paid, but it's our property. You'd like paying ourselves, wouldn't it, Dorinda, or...
It is, um...
Yeah, we could take, Howard, take out the HVAC permit.
We already have, the contractor has taken it.
All right. All right, any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries, five to one. Anything else under Parks, Don?
I just have, I have one thing.
I've got a question.
Okay. Uh, Karen Fur, well, Karen first.
Arbor Day celebration is gonna be at Prudence Park on Friday, May 11th, it starts at 10 o'clock.
May 11th?
May 11th. At 10 o'clock?
Yes.
I've got a question. Now, isn't there one piece of, one more piece of equipment still waiting for my park that you have stored somewhere?
No, all the equipment is installed at that location.
Okay, anything else under Parks?
Check into that, there's...
Um, Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Baron?
I don't have anything, Mr. Lake, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got a few things here. Um, we've recently made significant progress with the Canadian National Railroad in regards to a blocked culvert, um, within the railroad right away at 63rd and Wait Street. Um, they're gonna send a crew out there Monday to unblock this culvert and see what kind of damage there is. We're gonna assist with our jetback truck, so, um, this is after, you know, um, a lot of correspondence back and forth, and we finally sent the notice of violation, and definitely got their attention, so, uh, they will have a crew out there Monday, and we'll be assisting them to unblock that culvert to, to help out that neighborhood, which is a great thing. Um, we just finished, uh, some ditch regrading along Clay Street, um, to make sure that the water continues to travel, um, southward into, uh, a conveyance that goes into the Deep River eventually, so, uh, to keep that area free and clear, um, and we'll continue , uh, making improvements in that area. Um, we're pursuing, uh, enforcement actions against Pima LLC for an illicit discharge of failed lift station, uh, which is a serious, uh, incident, uh, from a stormwater perspective, um, so we are, had a lot of interesting meetings with, uh, Mr. Jim Meyer, who's our attorney, and Mike Depping, IDM, and the Lake County Health Department, so we're all partnering on this and, uh, and pursuing it to the fullest extent of our...
Who was that, Matt?
Uh, Pima LLC, the lift station.
Oh, I know, okay, yeah, we...
It's been an ongoing issue.
Yes, that's...
Yeah, the electric keeps on getting shut off over there.
Yes, and...
Nobody's in that building again.
Yeah.
Yeah, the proposed, you could say, yeah, the proposed school, yeah.
And, and as a result, uh, there was a, an overflow pipe that then drains into a nearby ditch, so, um, you know, that's something that we, we can't tolerate, and we have the ordinance to address it, so that's exactly what we're doing, uh, like I said, to the fullest extent. Uh, in relation to that, our new stormwater ticket citation books came in, and, uh, knowing Joe Fish, they'll, will run out soon, so, um, he's out and about inspecting all the sites and, um, and enforcing, uh, everything that he sees. Um, we had a public meeting the other day with residents around, uh, 54th Court, uh, to kind of explain that project, and I think it was very well received by the residents, uh, they understand, uh, all the benefits that they'll be receiving, and the sustainability of that project, and, uh, some of the unique stormwater features, uh, of that particular project. Um, we're gonna be meeting again with, um, our Regional Stormwater Coordination Group on Thursday at the Hobart Sanitary District. Um, again, we're coordinating with our neighboring communities to kind of partner on all the things that we have to deal with in terms of stormwater regulations and implementation. Um, the Taff Street Drainage Improvements Project, we're about 90% design, 90% design. Uh, we're still working with, um, IHCD, they're looking to purchase an easement from us, so we're waiting for an easement agreement, and mostly we're looking for any additional engineering costs and materials, uh, to have that as far as, you know, as a part of the, the cost for the easement. Um, we also have a water line that needs to be lowered in one section, so we're working with Indian American Water on that. Um, for the new Stormwater Center, we had a progress meeting on the 13th. Um, we had NIPSCO, we invited them, uh, 'cause we're gonna participate in an incentive program with them, 'cause we're doing a lot of the energy-efficient, um, techniques and strategies, so, um, we're applying for their program and partnering with them on that, so that's something that we're definitely looking forward with. Uh, working with Robinson on the site plan, and some of the drainage and all the stormwater regulations for our detention and all that, that are associated with the site, and, uh, I'm finalizing the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for our Rule 5 permit for that project. Uh, under GIS, we're considering, we're continuing with the City Maps Project, I'm working with our cartographer. Uh, we had a couple of reviews of, of the street, um, the street data, so we're refining that, and I think they should have that pretty well wrapped up, um, in the next month or so. They're gonna be selling ad space and stuff for that, and we get 20% of the proceeds that they, and we get 4,000 maps, and we get interactive map on the website and all that, so definitely a positive thing, uh, something that, you know, really doesn't cost us anything, and we get all the benefits. I'm also working with the fire department, I'm out with them today, uh, on, um, doing a hydrant map for the GIS, so they're borrowing my GPS unit and going around and mapping all the hydrants, so we have a, a map of all those, so they can do pre-incident planning and that. Um, under the Stormwater Mapping Validation Project, uh, Robinson's moving along with that. Um, they just finished Broadway, which was probably the most dangerous portion of that project, given the traffic and everything else, so, um, their crews are moving right along, so we've already used some of these maps for some of the other, uh, projects to make sure there's no conflicts, so they're already showing that they're, they're very useful, and we're gonna use that, obviously, as a part of our new Stormwater Master Plan. Uh, under Grant Coordination, uh, NERPC's got a green infrastructure workshop coming up, and, uh, some grant opportunities associated with that, in partnership with, uh, the DNR and NOAA, so, um, we're looking to do something there, and, uh, and definitely throw in an application, see where it lands. Um, and EPA's Office of Transportation Air Quality, uh, they're looking for requests for proposals for about 20 million in funding nationally, so we'll see, uh, if there's any opportunities for us there as well. Um, we've partnered with Parks on some of the Arbor Day stuff, uh, like, um, like Karen said, it's May 11th, Friday, um, planning several activities, um, special tree planting ceremonies, um, the Tree City USA Awards, we are Tree City USA, so I picked up the materials in that from downstate, so we'll have a, a ceremony for that, with the proclamation read, which we have to do, and, um, at the Tree City USA, uh, and Arbor Day event, and then also, we'll have Pam Lauk, who's the state coordinator for urban forestry, she's gonna attend the event as well. Um, under the Environmental Resource Committee, um, we're continuing to review landscape plans. I think we've got maybe four or five on Thursday's agenda, so, um, we're continuing to make, make a difference there. Um, I hope to use some of the members for in-kind match for grants to help out with the few things that I got going on, and, um, at the last meeting, they, some of them offered their assistance for Arbor Day if they needed help at that event. Um, we have the MS4 State Annual Conference coming up on the 17th. Uh, I'll be presenting there on ordinance development and moderating a session on plan reviews, and then today, we were asked, uh, by, uh, the committee for the statewide Conference for an AFSUM, as the Indiana Association of Flood Plan and Stormwater Management, if we could present a session on inspections and documentation and enforcement, that'll be in the fall, and, um, that's, that's all I have for now.
Anything else under Environmental Affairs?
Uh, yes, I had something, um, Mr. Hardaway brought up, uh, that the resident was having a problem with that. I spoke with Jordan from Waste Management, and he called the people directly, and the issue is resolved there, and if anybody has any problems with, uh, waste management, just give me a call, and, uh, I'll get on the phone and call the right person to, uh, get the issue resolved.
Thank you. Okay. Elections and Public Relations, Mrs. Miano?
Uh, yes, May 22nd will be Municipal Day. The event will begin at 4:30 PM with a barbecue. Um, all the children and their families are invited to attend. All council, clerk treasurer, town administrator, department heads, town judge, town attorney, will have a student participating on that day with them. Also, on June 23rd, we will be having our first annual kitty and pet parade. The parade will kick off at 11 o'clock AM at the Geisling Funeral Home and continue to our town hall. Um, the pets will all be, the dogs will be on leash, and any other small animals will be in pet carriers, so there is no escaping and running across Broadway. Um, the annual 4th of July parade, it will be July 3rd at 6 o'clock PM. Again, it will be beginning at the Geisling Funeral Home and going down Broadway to the Maryville High School entrance on 66th. Um, the council will pay for their own candy. The candy will not be tossed, um, you could walk along and distribute the candy. All candy will not be tossed. I would hate to see a child run out for a tootsie roll and get hit by a car. You know, so, council will, will pay for that. Uh, the theme of the parade will be honoring our armed forces. The grand marshals will be five people from all five branches of the military. Commander Rick Shirley from the VFW Post has pledged to help me 100% with this endeavor. We will be having members of the Indiana Patriot Guard lead the parade. We will have the students from the Maryville High School Junior ROTC Program involved. Hopefully, we can get some old army equipment like jeeps and tanks and trucks and whatnot, um, and it's going to be dedicated to the people, ladies and gentlemen, who have dedicated their lives and their service to us. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, saying none, Economic Development, Mr. Geralcheck?
Yes, uh, pleased to announce that I think that Mueller Accura, the inside of the building, is, uh, just about ready to be completed. They're getting ready to put their parking lot in, and I see that, uh, there's some stuff on the agenda for the BZA for signage out there, so it should be opening soon.
Okay. Anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
Utility Liaison, does anybody have anything for Ron?
Oh, yes, I have something, uh, I'm sorry. On April 30th, we're having, uh, our public hearing for the, uh, for Lincoln Gardens and Young America residents. Uh, Utilities Inc. is wanting, uh, to authorize an increase of 95% uh, on the water bills. The public hearing will be held Monday, April 30th, at 6:00 PM at the Maryville High School Auditorium, 276 East 68th Place in Maryville. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Town Government Organization, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
Okay, General Orders, ordinances on first reading. Ordinance 12-16, in order to the Town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance, Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established R2 Single Family Residential Zoning Classification to a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning Classification. Uh, a memo to the Town Council from Dorinda Gregor, Zoning Director, regarding a change of zone report, P2Z1-0312, ordinance 12-16, date is March 21st, 2012. Petitioner, view outdoor advertising. Owners, Boys and Girls Clubs of Northwest Indiana, requests a zone change from R2 Single Family Residential to C3 Highway Commercial Zone on 1.4 acres. Total C3 zone will encompass 3.09 acres. Purpose for a nursery and advertising billboard sign to be permitted as part of a previously approved environmental education center, and C3 Highway Commercial Zone of 1.69 acres. Nursery definition, any land or structure used for the growing, harvesting, processing, storing, and selling of plants, shrubs, trees, and flowers, including products used for gardening and landscaping, but not including fruit or vegetable sales, and not including a retail establishment which sells plants as an accessory aspect of a large establishment. General location, approximately 1025 East 61st Avenue. Date of the Plan Commission, March 20th. Deadline for our action is June 18th. The Plan Commission approved this by a vote of seven to zero, with the condition, uh, conditions that it be for this petitioner only, at this location only, for the permitted uses to be limited to an advertising sign and a nursery. Uh, so petitioner here.
Representative is here.
Mr. Anderson, I don't know if council that were not at the workshop have any questions? No? Saying none?
So moved.
Second.
This is just for the, uh, for the billboard sign, right?
No. And the nursery for Boys and Girls Club.
Boys and Girls.
Are we gonna be able to advertise on this sign? Is that one of our conditions, that...
I don't, I don't know, Mr. Geralcheck, you'd have to ask Mr. Anderson. Rich, why don't you go ahead and step up to the microphone?
Richard Anderson, 9211 Brody, this is an electronic sign.
It is not an electronic, okay.
It's not approved for that.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
All right. Um, at this time, since I have a, uh, conflict of interest, I'm gonna be abstaining from this vote. As you know, I work for a competing sign company, so, uh, motion by Mr. Hardaway, and seconded by Mrs. Miano, to approve ordinance 12-16. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Geralcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Whiting? I mean, I, Pettit?
Whiting? I mean, Pettit?
Mr. Whiting's not here.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
You want me to call your name?
I don't want you to call me a name, Gene, no, I can go home and get that.
Well, I'd call you here if you want to fill it out.
I know you do. I abstain.
I wrote down, what do you want me to do now? Red file, five.
Five, zero, one, motion carries. All right. Next first reading ordinance is ordinance 12-20. An ordinance of the town of Maryville, providing that the zoning ordinance town of Maryville be amended by changing the established C4E Commercial Entertainment District Classification to a C2 Community Commercial Zoning Classification. Memo to the town council from Dorinda Gregor, zoning director, regarding change of zone report, P4Z2-0412, ordinance 12-20. Date is April 18th, 2012. The petitioner is Maryville Stormwater Utility. The owner is the Maryville Stormwater Utility, requests a zone change from C4E Commercial Entertainment District to a C2 Community Commercial Zone. Purposes proposed administrative offices and educational center to be known as the Maryville Stormwater Utility Resource Center. General location, 7404 Broadway. Date of the plan commission, April 17th, 2012. Deadline for council is July 19th. The plan commission approved this by a vote of six to one with no conditions. Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Excuse me, I need a motion first, I'm sorry.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Miano to approve ordinance 12-20 on first reading. Now, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call.
Span? Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Motion carries, six to zero. Second reading ordinances, but before we have second reading ordinances, we are going to open up a public hearing on the appropriation of a $1.9 million general obligation bond. This bond is taxpayer-backed. It will coincide with two ordinances that we have after the public hearing, is that correct, Mr. Fink?
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, is there anyone that wants to speak on the $1.9 million general obligation bond that the town of Maryville will be issuing with future action?
And why don't you indicate what the bond would be for?
I'm sorry, you're correct, Mr. Fink. Read you the short title of ordinance, 12-17. An ordinance of the town of Maryville, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the town in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,900,000 to procure funds to be applied to the cost of financing any and all or any portion of the completion of various road improvements in the town, including but not limited to general road and sidewalk construction, road repaving and other infrastructure projects throughout the town, together with expenses incidental thereto, including expenses in connection with the issuance of bonds. Again, this is primarily for the local road and street repaving program in the town of Maryville for 2012.
And the other thing I just mentioned is that it will be split it up evenly amongst all seven.
It is divided, the $1.9 million will be divided seven ways, which if my math is correct, Mr. Fink, is approximately $275,000 per ward.
Good math, sir.
I wouldn't trust it, though. All right, is there anyone here to speak during the public hearing in favor or against the issuance of these bonds? Anyone that wants to speak in favor or against? In favor or against? Time we'll close the public hearing. Second reading ordinances, again, ordinance 12-17. It is an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the town in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,900,000 to procure funds to be applied to the cost of financing any and all or any portion of the completion of various road improvements in town, including but not limited to general road and sidewalk construction, road repaving and other infrastructure projects throughout the town, together with expenses incidental thereto, including expenses in connection with the issuance of bonds.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Hardaway to approve ordinance 12-17 on second reading. During discussion, council? Since this is second reading, is there any public comment on the ordinance itself? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the council, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Motion carries, six, zero. Next ordinance for second reading is ordinance 12-18. An ordinance of the town of Maryville. Ordinance of the town council of the town of Maryville, appropriating the proceeds together with the investment earnings thereon derived from the sale of town of Maryville, Indiana, general obligation bonds heretofore authorized to be issued for the purpose of financing any and all or any portion of the completion of various road improvements in town, including but not limited to general road and sidewalk construction, road repaving and other infrastructure projects throughout the town, together with the expenses incurred in connection therewith, including the cost of the issuance of the bonds.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Miano to approve ordinance 12-18 on second reading. Any discussion, council? Seeing none, since this is second reading, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the council, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call, please.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Motion carries, six, zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Fink.
Just for the record, just for the record, you already brought this up in the public hearing, but there was one sentence added to the bond ordinance that indicated in the bond ordinance that it would be a taxpayer-backed general obligation bond, ad valorem, property tax back, meaning that it's a taxpayer-backed bond.
Yes. Okay. Next item is resolution, Resolution 12-07, Correction of Line Items in the Stormwater Operations and Maintenance Fund. The total adjustments are $142,001.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Miano to adopt Resolution 12-07. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call. Oops, I'm sorry, voice vote, Mr. Gurnsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, six, zero. Don't believe we have any BZA action, do we, Dorinda? All right, is there any old business of the council?
Yes, I have something under old business.
Mr. Garalcheck?
There was an article that was put out by the Hammond Times several weeks back where they called and questioned you. On the council meeting minutes from 4/28 of 2009, there were six people present, one absent. In the meeting minutes, under Environmental Affairs, Mr. Garalcheck made the motion to sign the agreement with the Lake County Solid Waste to send our garbage to the ethanol plant. Mr. Pettit, you seconded it. And a roll call vote was taken four to two to approve this and, or four, four yeses and two no's and one absence. So, I just wanted to clarify to the record that we have committed that we are gonna send our garbage to the ethanol plant. So, it was voted on back in 4/28 of 2009. So, I'm not sure where we're getting our information from or whatever, but I would suggest that if anybody calls you from any other paper as far as anything that's going on with the solid waste district, please do, or call them, calls to me.
All right. Anything else under old business?
I got, can we ever revisit that? To talk about maybe that we don't want to do that?
We voted on it here and...
I know, but can we, at some point? I'm just, just a question.
Yeah, I mean, we've already committed that we were gonna send our garbage to the ethanol plant.
Okay.
And it's come up in several times in newspapers or whatever that we weren't sending our garbage to the ethanol plant. So, we've already committed to this and I think we should leave it standing. And if in 90 days he doesn't come up with his financing, it's gonna be a done deal anyways. So, just wanted to clarify that for the record, thank you.
All right. Anything else under old business, ladies and gentlemen? Anything under new business? No new business? Public comment? Anyone from the public have any issues? All right. Announcements, the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet tomorrow night here at 6:30. Plan Commission Workshop is Tuesday, May 1st at 6:30. The Stormwater Management Board meeting is also Tuesday, May 1st at 4:30. And as I alluded to earlier, due to Election Day, we're gonna have a special town council meeting on Wednesday, May 9th at 12:30 and that will enable Mr. Gurnsey, we will approve the consent agenda so that the bills can be paid, right, Gene?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Motion, Roger.
Second.
Are we taking pictures?
Yes, we are, council, taking pictures with Mr.